We'll just wait a few more minutes. I think a couple of people are being getting on, just so before we begin. All right, I'm just gonna get us started here this evening. Welcome tonight to the special meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council. It's been a while since we've discussed the Tacoma Junction redevelopment project. And tonight is going to be a night of presentations to familiarize ourselves with it again, and to go over the project as it now stands. I'm going to turn over in a minute to our city manager. But first, I also just want to say thank you to the city staff and also to the Montgomery County Planning Department for all their work on this project. And thank you so much, Elsa, for being with us tonight, as well as folks from Neighborhood Development Company and a bunch of other people who worked on this project tonight. I really appreciate you taking the time. So we'll have a number of presentations to make sure that we're all grounded in where we stand with the project right now. There are a lot of documents on the city website that you can follow along with as well. And then approximately around 7:15 after the presentations, we'll be going into breakout rooms, the way this is going to work. And staff will describe it in more detail in a moment. We have three topic areas that you were asked to select before when you signed up for this evening. And everyone will go to their first choice, have about 20 minutes in there, and then for discussion. And then we'll switch after that, and then you can go to your second choice. But this is really the beginning. As we consider the revised plans, we have lots of meetings coming up. So after tonight, on Wednesday night, at our regular city council meeting, we will have a work session, and that's a time when I hope, I think council will ask questions based on what we've heard tonight and the discussions in the breakout rooms. I want to thank Elsa because he said he would come back and join us on Wednesday night because we may have some questions for him then. So I just wanted to make sure my colleagues on the council know that he will be with us again on Wednesday night. And then on Wednesday, April 28th, at our regular council meeting, we will have that night, two things will happen on the 28th. We will start our regular council meeting probably around 6 o'clock, and we'll have time for groups that want to make longer presentations than normal at the beginning of the council meeting. So how that's going to work and all logistics for that, you can find on the city website, and it describes it there. But we know that there are different groups of people who may want to join together and present their comments together. So we wanted to provide that opportunity, and that will be on Wednesday, April 28th. In addition, for individuals who want to provide comments, we also have a public hearing that night on the project. And that is on, and then we'll have another council work session. And then we are scheduled on Wednesday, May 5th, to vote on a resolution on the project. That resolution will then be transmitted to the Montgomery County Planning Board for consideration. And then the next step would be for the site plan to go before the Montgomery County Planning Board for final consideration likely in late May. So that's just a broad overview. I also know my colleagues on the city council, I think Councilwoman Kostick has already started having lots of meetings. I don't know if she's ever stopped having meetings. But I know she's doing that, and a number of other colleagues have also set up smaller neighborhood meetings. In addition, there's always opportunities to email individual council members, the city clerk with your comments. And we also have online a way that you can submit questions. We're trying to facilitate as much as possible the sharing of questions and information. And so if you get on the city website, you can see how you can do that as well. So I'm gonna stop talking now, sit back, listen to the presentations, and turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you very much. Welcome, and thank you all for joining us and joining the council for this presentation regarding the Tacoma Junction redevelopment project. Ms. Cook Gaines, could you share your screen, please? We'll get there. There we go. So for tonight's agenda, we have five different segments. We have a presentation by our Economic Development Manager, Samira Cook Gaines, on the economic development setting of the project. Then we get a project overview by the Neighborhood Development Company CEO and founder Adrian Washington and Senior Associate Jing Jing Liu. Then we have an overview of the Montgomery County Development Review Process by Chief of Down County Planning Elsa Heisel McCoy with the Montgomery County Planning Department. Then our Community Development Manager Roz Grisby will give an overview of the elements that have been reviewed by city staff. We'll come together briefly, and then it'll be time for breakout sessions. And we have three different topics in the breakout sessions. One is on parking, one is on public space, one is on stormwater management, trees, and sustainability. And I think that something that's very important to these are that these breakout rooms are ones in which the city council has a role to play in determining whether or not their goals are met, given new information or the need to consider potential trade-offs. So they were chosen very specifically to get information, clarifying information to the public, information from the public in advance of the council's consideration of the site plan. As the mayor went through the next steps, we have a city council work session on April 14th, the public hearing on April 28th with the work session, and then the city council vote on May 5th before it goes to the planning board. I'm very pleased with the amount of attention that our many staff have given to this project. And you'll see as we go through these plans, I'm very pleased with the detailed work of the various county agencies that have contributed to the work that will be presented by Elsa Heisel McCoy. And one of the things I want to call out especially is that Neighborhood Development Company has done an excellent job over the years of hearing suggestions from the staff, suggestions from the public, and responding to requirements or suggestions by various agencies. And so there's been a number of changes in the site plan that you'll see today. So now I'm pleased to turn this over for the economic development setting with Economic Development Manager Samira Cook Gaines. Samira?
Thank you, Suzy. And I will just jump right into our next slide. I am here today to really talk about setting the stage around economic development in this project. Our Economic Development Department is relatively new, about two years old. So our department came a little bit after our partnership with the Neighborhood Development Company. To start with, I want to ground where we are with the city of Tacoma Park in our economic development goals and strategies. To start, there are two guiding documents really around economic development and two guiding documents that also provide directives to us as staff to execute on as we do our daily work. That first one is the city council priorities. These council priorities are set and reviewed every year. And this is kind of the guiding directive or force as we look at policies, programs, and even the partnerships that we make with other organizations such as the Neighborhood Development Company. These are the guiding directives from our city council elected officials. The second one is a document, and it's our Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. This document was a number of years in the making, data and research around our small businesses, the workforce needs, and the surrounding areas in comparison to Tacoma Park. So just to highlight some of the council priorities that really do guide the work that we do every day and for economic development, I'll highlight one in particular. The first is mitigating the impacts of COVID-19 on the city operations and the community. That's the most obvious and new council priority. The others have been with us, were with us all of last year and are following this year. One is a livable community for all, a fiscally sustainable government, an economically sustainable community, an engaged, responsive, and service-oriented government. And then finally, community development for an improved and equitable quality of life. This is the one that hits home for me and the one that I really do make sure that I am a good steward of. Community development for improved and equitable quality of life. That improved piece is the piece where you start to fill the rub. Improvement looks like and feels like different things to different people. But for me, the improvement has to be about community economic development. And that includes everything from workforce, small business support and growth, as well as the idea of maintaining the infrastructure for a community that is economically sound. So diving a little deeper into our Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, there is a goal that really focuses on preserving, producing, and protecting. And that goal is to really make sure that everyone in our community can benefit from a high quality of life, a stable tax base, and overall good to survive economic well-being. And what we need to recognize is that not everyone experiences Tacoma Park the same way. So it is a goal to ensure that that's really something we focus in on. And in that, we focus on three different versions of this goal. First is preserving, preserving existing businesses and affordable housing in Tacoma Park, including in revitalizing areas. Producing, we need to produce more housing and opportunities for businesses to start and grow across our all income spectrums. And when I say income spectrums, I'm not just talking about residents. I'm also talking about entrepreneurs and business owners. And we want these opportunities to be across the city, across all neighborhoods and areas. And then protecting, we want to protect our renters, homeowners, and local businesses from discrimination and displacement. And we want to protect our environment from destruction. So this is a major goal of our Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. So as we start talking through this project, I really do want you to remember that this is the proximate goal here. This is how we continue to have a thriving community. There are a few objectives that go along with this goal. The first is attracting new businesses to Tacoma Park and facilitating the growth of existing businesses, particularly those that help with workforce needs. We want to bring in new businesses, but we also want to help the businesses who are here to grow, become stronger. These are our homegrown hometown businesses. And they are oftentimes the first ones who will hire from their local community. So we want to help them grow. And as we look at economic development partners and projects, we're looking for folks who are going to help us meet these goals. We also want to emphasize local ownership and other goals as defined by the plan. We also want to encourage the construction of new, moderate, and higher-density infill commercial, residential, and mixed-use developments, things that are consistent with our city's Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. As many of you know, as residents, our housing stock and our commercial stock is very much aging. And when it comes to things like our sustainability and climate action goals, we really have a great opportunity with redevelopment and new development. So just wrapping up our objectives and giving a moment, a moment over to our development partners, we really are interested in making sure that we have modern, updated spaces. Currently, our commercial spaces, as I said, they're aging. They are not ADA compliant. Many of them are not meeting their sustainability goals. And as we found out during this pandemic, they're not meeting public health or safety goals. They have become very much a challenge when you talk about things like space, social distancing, even things like filtration systems. We really do struggle in our city when we have not just aging housing, but also aging commercial space, which is not conducive to attracting new businesses or space for our folks who exist here now to grow. And what I'd like to say is that this modern, updated space is to be pandemic-informed, right? Not created on behalf of the pandemic. But the pandemic has taught us some lessons that should just go along with with all of our redevelopment and all of our policies, programs, procedures, the way we do things as we all sit here on a digital meeting. So for us, we really are interested in spaces that are pandemic-informed, but that just means that these are modern spaces for modern times. And then there's the general support of community economic development. Now, economic development can be a word that sounds distant, but let me put this piece in the front. My work has always been in community economic development. And what that means is that there is a focus on circulating the assets, the wealth, the prosperity within the city, within the community, within neighborhoods. So when we think about the support of community economic development, the first thing that comes to mind for me around this new project, and the thing that excites me most about it is that as your economic development manager, I am already facing a lot of local competition for space from our businesses. So for example, I've been approached by two nonprofits who operate within Tacoma Park who are interested in bringing their services to Tacoma Park, expanding their services in Tacoma Park. We have no space for them. All the seats are full up, and there is no place to sit. So those local organizations are now, and again, there have been two in the last year and a half that are now looking in Silver Spring. We're losing the opportunity for our own community to gain the benefits of bringing in local organizations that want to be here. So when you think about things like office space, office space is what a nonprofit uses to be here in a community and then focus their services on communities. So right there, our community economic development piece, that's something that really excites me about the project that we really need to focus in on. Another are just our small businesses. Tacoma Park businesses are pandemic-whitening. Many of them have been thriving for years, but not able to stretch or grow in the way that they can hire new people, create additional revenue. These are things, the more money that our businesses make, actually, the better our community is because our businesses circle their dollars in our Tacoma Park city community. And then the other piece of it is kind of just more aesthetic and more of an aesthetic and comfort piece. I'm not specifically talking about ADA compliance when I say walkability. This walkability is really about quality of life and quality of life for our residents. This location is really a spot where people are not really encouraged to stay for a while or go to other areas of the commercial district. So we are looking forward to new, modern building that can create some level of walkability for our residents and actually become more of an economic stimulus for our existing businesses in the area. And I should be very clear about an equity piece here. We have a number of businesses owned by people of color in that area, and they own their building. So some of this, when we're talking about how we invest in a community, you also want to think of where in the community you're investing and who's immediately impacted. If we're serious about racial equity goals, we should be serious about where we invest as well. And then lastly, it's really our economic development challenge is really about a need for investment, maintenance, and sustainability just to keep up. When I first started this position, I had a number of folks ask me, you know, what do we need economic development for? And I think the best analogy I can give you is really putting a glass dome around our city. It's very much the idea that nothing can get in, we can get out, we can't get out, and everything in there is protected. But the truth is, it's not protected. We have to remove that dome. One, we want to be as diverse and as inclusive as we always have been. And when you put that dome on top, it's a little bit difficult to say that we are an open community when we're not interested in bringing others in. The other piece of it is that our beloved city of Tacoma Park, without additional economic development, and I'm being clear, community economic development, without any additional redevelopment, renovations, upgrades, and maintenance, will just decay from inside that glass. And I'm here to really work with the team and our development partner to make sure that we're able to provide those spaces, to be able to attract those new businesses, provide spaces for businesses to grow, provide spaces for nonprofits, and finally, to provide the opportunity for our surrounding community to leverage this asset. So with that said, I will pass it to Adrian Washington and open the screen for faces. And Adrian, feel free to take it from here.
Okay, well, first of all, can everybody hear me? You always got to ask that these days, and I believe Jing Jing has brought up the presentation. Let me know when you're ready.
Can you see my screen?
Yes, but it's not in full screen. Yes, but it's not in full screen.
That shows full screen.
Yes, that looks good to me. Can everyone else see it?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Samira, and thank you to everyone here tonight. The members, the mayor, the members of the city council, the staff, and most importantly, the citizens of Tacoma Park. So before I get started, just in the same way that the city manager acknowledged our efforts, I would like to acknowledge the, the efforts of the city staff and the Montgomery County Planning Staff. You citizens are blessed with a great team. The staff is hardworking, they are smart, they are dedicated. They have pushed us in many ways. And we've pushed back sometimes, but it's always been in the spirit of making this project better. And I think that the collaborative effort that we have has made this project, which was good from the beginning, even better. So I'd like to give a shout out to Suzie, to you and all your team, and Elza and, and your team as well. So first slide, please. So we're going to go over, and some of this is, we're going to go back in history a bit, because I realize it's been a while before we've been before you. So we want to refresh people's memory of who we are, you know, why we believe NDC was the best choice. I, I can't speak to why the city chose us, but I believe, you know, I want to talk about why we think for the best choice for this project. Our vision for Tacoma Junction, I know we'll get a lot more into detail in this breakout session, but want to give overall kind of why, you know, we've designed what we've designed. We're going to catch you up on what we've been working on since the last time we presented to the city. Much more detail on the updated site, site plan, and then a look ahead to where we are going. Thanks. Next slide, please. So as a background of who we are, the Neighborhood Development Company, we have, first of all, 22-year track record. So we've been around, we've done some things. We are black owned. I bring that up because I know there's been a lot of discussion around racial equity, as it should be. This is not the time right now, but I do have some experience in that matter, and I welcome that discussion when the time comes to discuss it. We delivered over 1 million square feet. That makes us a developer of some size, but not a big developer. I think it puts us in the medium size, and I think really it's kind of the right size developer to do a project like this. We have always been a force of positive change, going back to our very first project in 1999, up to and even more so for the projects that we are working on right now. We focus on neighborhood retail, obviously very important to this. We also focus on market rate affordable and workforce housing, both rent or for sale. So we have experience with different types of development types, and we have experience with projects that make a difference. And since exception, you know, we developed, you know, we use a lot of money in real estate transactions. We worked across 19 distinct neighborhoods. And so I think it just gives an example of the breadth of experience that we have brought to this project. Next slide, please. Here's our portfolio of selected projects. These are not all the projects, these are my newer ones. You can see Tacoma Junction there, in the, in the, the lower portion. Again, sort of the experience of different breaths of properties we've done. We've done, you know, all residential, we've done all commercial, we've done all mixed use. And just interesting thing, when Jing Jing, you know, I'm talking about this slide, I realized that almost every one of these projects has, you know, been conceived, developed, built, delivered, and, you know, in the time that we've been working at the Tacoma Junction project. So we thought that was something as a company that we found, you know, pretty interesting and noteworthy. Next slide, please. Here's our pipeline projects, the projects that are coming up, and, you know, a couple of notable things there, our project size has gotten much bigger. I mean, as we've had success in delivering projects, we've been trusted by governments, by financial backers, others to develop much larger projects than the one we are working on, Tacoma Junction. So we still are very excited about the Tacoma Junction project, but we wanted to give you a demonstration of the confidence that others have had with us. The second, that's the two on the left are our public-private partnerships. The one on the right, Park Place and Addison Road in Prince George's County is somewhat public and that it's near metro station. So again, I think it demonstrates our overall commitment to working in public-private partnerships. You know, knowing what the policy objectives are of government and working to make those possible with realities of the marketplace. Next project, please. Um, next slide, please. So why, besides what I've shown you, why in DC? Next slide, please. Many reasons, and I think this applied to Tacoma Park, but they really apply to all the projects that we do. I mean, we are a mission-driven developer. We are, you know, we make economically viable projects. But we also, almost every project I've shown you, everyone I could take you to has a mission purpose beyond just the bottom line, and has really changed communities for the better. We know the value of community partnerships. We've worked at all kinds of communities. We've worked with high-end communities, low-income communities, communities of color, communities with, you know, not that much color, all types, at all levels, from the lowest level governments to the top. And we value those, not because we have to do that, but because we honestly believe it makes our projects better. As I said before, we have a long track record, successfully partnering with local government officials, communities, to create really innovative projects. I mean, we, you know, it, it's really the interesting projects are what drives us. It's we, you know, one of our, you know, core concepts of the company is we want to do projects that excite us. Certainly, the Tacoma Junction project is innovative and excites us. We have a very talented development team and, you know, folks like Jing Jing, who is, you know, championing this project, other people have worked on it. I mean, I don't want to be a modest, but I mean, I think the talent that, you know, our team brings to the project is really something that the city of Tacoma Park should be very excited about. And not just talent, but the, the dedication, the hard work, the integrity. You know, it, it's very special. I'm very proud of the work that, you know, that our people do. As I said before, we have extensive development experience in almost every major asset category and income range across the area. And again, not to brag, but, you know, we won numerous awards, you know, awards for design quality, awards for community impact, awards for, you know, just, you know, being there and doing the right thing. So we are very proud about our track record and who we are and what we bring to the city of Tacoma Park and to this project. Next slide, please. So our vision for Tacoma Junction. Next slide, please. So really, you know, and, and Samira, you know, you really stole a lot of my thunder, so my hat's off to you. You really talked about, you know, stepping back from the details and setbacks and bike lanes and laybys and, and, you know, buyer retention, all the technical things that we are happy to discuss. It really is about revitalization. And so we always have to remember that what we're talking about is a surface parking lot, old, rutted, impervious and a auto, you know, clinic. You know, my hat's off to Johnny, he's been a successful businessman. But really, we're talking about something that is not something that I think is, you know, in the highest and best use and the best rates of Tacoma Junction. And we want to turn it into, you know, a first-class, not a Bethesda, not a inappropriate, but a first-class project that meets the goals of revitalization that Samira, I think, really well laid out in her presentation. And the second thing is about sustainability, you know, a surface parking lot is not a model of sustainability. And so we want to, you know, take what's there, use the most modern techniques we can, use of all of our thinking, push the envelope and really make this a model of sustainability that the citizens of Tacoma Park can be proud of. Next slide, please. You know, we look back and, and really, you know, I can see there's a lot of details here of it's Tacoma Junction. We looked at the Tacoma Junction Task Force and all of other things. And, and the many kind of outreach sessions we had with many of you before the city council approved our project, looked at it. And really, you know, it falls into a lot of buckets, you know, traffic improvements, access parking, pedestrian street state improvement. We do all of that, but really, and again, Samira thinks and said it much better than I will, it's about revitalization. We want to provide new places for residents to visit, eat at, to shop, to gather. But we also, we want to bring new customers' energy to the junction. I mean, to support, and let me underline that, to support the current businesses. I think that the junction, you know, has a great collection of local businesses, but it is, you know, and it is not the kind of active place that brings the energy, you know, that current businesses need. They're doing a great job, they got great services, but I think they need more, they need the catalyst. And we believe that the Tacoma Junction project that we are proposing in partnership with the city will bring that energy and will rise up the current businesses. And finally, you know, it's a matter of, you know, fiscal dollars and cents. Tacoma Park has a very small tax base. No one wants their taxes raised, and so how do you increase that tax base? You bring, you know, property that is laying fallow into productive use, and you bring, you know, new customers and existing businesses so that they prosper as well. So really, you know, our mission is revitalization. While doing the other things we, you know, talked about, traffic improvement, parking, pedestrian, all those other things that'll make great development, those things all go hand in hand if you do them with skill. And we believe that we will do them with skill. Next slide, please. So, you know, how do we do that? And again, we'll get into a lot more detail in the breakout sessions and, and the council work sessions, but really saw sort of three things that, you know, that we thought were important, that we saw as themes in this project that really make it work. New trends for construction. So one of the things we really are looking at bringing in is using a technology called mass timber, which has sustainability, has aesthetic design, is lightweight, strong, it's more cost and time efficient. This is a technology that is used much more on the West Coast, there's very few examples on the East Coast. We want to bring that here. And if we're able to do that, we can really make this a showcase, really make it an example that, you know, will bring excitement and attention and a positive image to this project. And, and by reflection, Tacoma Park, we're very excited about this technology. We're going to work hard to bring it to the site. Next slide, please. The next is retail tenants, because that's really all about. I mean, you know, we're going to sit here and discuss and debate like a building, but the building is really only a home for the types of tenants that you bring. And that's why the city, you know, I assume, wanted to have this project done, not to just have some kind of edifice there, but to, you know, bring businesses that will, you know, enhance the city. So, you know, we are looking at lots of potential retail tenants. The city pushed us very hard, and we agreed that we will not have any chain stores. We will not have big box there, is that this is, this is a development that will have retail tenants that reflect the spirit of Tacoma Park. So they'll have to be local and community oriented, arts-related, sporting goods, you know, shops, cafes, you know, a full-service restaurant, a bookstore perhaps. We haven't identified them because frankly, you know, this process has taken so long. There have been, you know, it is hard to attract tenants when you can't tell them, you know, when are you going to break ground? When are you going to move in? They want to know that. But, you know, as Samira talked about, there are folks out there who want to be here and are very excited. And we're going to bring an outstanding mix that is different than, you know, than anything, you know, in a typical commercial development, and we think reflects the junction and reflects Tacoma Park. Next slide, please. These are just, you know, these are images, they talk about kind of what our vision is, and, and we, and we use these a lot. But I mean, you know, we want to have places that reflect Tacoma Park. So no, it's not going to be like Bethesda fancy or downtown fancy, but it is going to be nice. I mean, we want to do a quality development. We want to bring something really nice to Tacoma Park. So we think we can hit that sweet spot of having, you know, cafes, restaurants, things like that, that, you know, that have a wow feature, but are reflective of the values of Tacoma Park. And so that's what we're shooting for. We think there's lots of people out there who want that, who want to be here, and that's who we're going after. Next slide, please. So the other thing, you know, it's, you know, as a development, as many of you know, it's, it's designed to be, you know, retail on the bottom floor, office on the second floor. We think that's a great mix. We think there's a need there. Samira talked about nonprofits that want to come. We're very excited about them as a possibility. But another thing we're looking at potentially is a community co-working space. And we, you know, like we, you know, we like to do in our company, we have sort of searched around for presidents, for ideas. These come from a friend of mine, Jim, out in California. He's created a community co-working space called Craft Work that really combines kind of the things you, you know, sort of the practical things you see in a place, you know, like a co-working space, but with a, a community basis, community flair. It really is, if I can use this term, a co-op for, you know, co-working that I think would work very well. So we're interested in finding potential nonprofit tenants, but we also are very excited about this concept. We think it would work great. We think there's a need for it. And I think particularly, it does respond to the post-COVID environment. We, you know, we see a future where people are working from home, but they also want to get out every once in a while. And they don't want to just sort of stay at home, you know, five days a week, and they don't want to commute downtown. So we think that the junction is a perfect place that would attract and be a home, a community space where people can gather and do all these things. And again, sort of the spirit of the Tacoma Junction Task Force of community gathering space. And so this is our take on it. We're very excited. And we hope to, if we do not find a, a sort of dedicated tenant to do something like this. Next slide, please. All right, I will now turn it over to Jing Jing Lu.
All right, thank you, Adrian. So over the past two years, we have some important milestones happened. On February 2012, the Tacoma Junction fourth report was issued. And on January 2014, the city released a request for proposals to redevelop the city-owned parking lot. On April 2015, NDC is very honored to be selected as a developer to partner with the city for this redevelopment. And then start from July 2016 to March 2017, we started a community consultation process to collect the feedbacks from the communities regarding the design, the programs, and the concept, uh, concept design was approved by the city council in October 2017. And then the combined site plan was approved in July 2018. And then the grant lists were started in September 2018. In the following months, NDC and Coop executed the cooperating agreement under parking lot sublease agreement. So on February 2019, the combined site plan was accepted by the county. And in the following months, NDC provided the updates to the city council for what's had been changed since 2018. So now let's talk more in detail about what, uh, what we've been working on since the last time we presented to the city council. So we attended three rounds of the HPC preliminary consultation hearings from May to October 2019. Based on the HPC feedbacks, we, the left side of the second floor was rechanged to read, to read as one story. The building height was reduced by two feet, and the parapet wall was significantly lowered. The central volume just pushed back by about two feet from the front facade. And then with all those, all of those changes, we resubmitted the combined site plan to the Montgomery County for review on July and November last year. And then made our final resubmission in January this year. So based on the county reviewers' feedback, a six-foot balcony was added per the set, along the side, the side frontage. And the landscaping and the sidewalk areas were rearranged to provide safer and larger public spaces. And the rear facade is, uh, and the rear facade was designed, was detailed designed. So I will talk more in detail when we talk about the updated plan. But before we jump to what changes, I would like to firstly talk about what has not been changed. So first is our overriding goal always remains the same, to deliver a project that is community-oriented and brings a ecological and economic character of Tacoma Park. The project will support local businesses of all types, provide more options for people to shop locally and bring new customers to the junction and to benefit the existing and the future business. The project will satisfy the requirements for legal certification, and we're seek to different ways to enhance the environment. And a stone water management is designed to exceed, exceed the city's requirement. We will also provide a 140-foot lay-by lane and a 10-foot service, service corridor between the proposed building and the co-op building. And the adequacy of the lay-by lane to meet the co-op's loading requirements has been confirmed by the co-op. We also value the importance of a public space to a community. So the amount of public space area approved has been improved and, and larger. So we also reserve spaces. So we also reserve spaces for future public arts installation. And we will work with the city and the community in the later phase. And the forest conservation plan remains uh, still remains in place. So here is a garage plan. Uh, the traffic flow pattern was updated to have a better circulation. And the guard has three ADA parking spaces, several motorcycle uh, so uh, circle parking spaces, four cashier spaces and a fifty-five standard parking spaces. And then here is a first floor plan. So based on the HPC feedback, uh, the central volume has been pushed by about two feet from the front facade. So the volume starts back sequentially. And the stair lobby has been pushed back to in line with the storefront to have larger public space. So the total square footage um for the ground floor is about uh nineteen thousand five hundred square feet. So we propose a five thousand square foot restaurant on the left side and about three thousand seven hundred square feet uh coffee area on the uh right side. And in the middle part, we propose about ten thousand square feet of retail spaces. So here are some changes for the front uh landscape. Uh, we shift the labaling behind the existing stop uh stop line. So, so it made the existing condition. Uh, and a six-foot uh balcony was added per master plan. Uh, the bus, bus station was relocated to the north side of the plan and a bus shelter was added here. Um, a standard six-foot free and clear sidewalk next to the public right away was provided uh per ADA requirements. Uh, we're also adding several uh, several tripers per the soil, soil volume and tree planting requirements. And now, uh, so the public spaces, uh, the area circled by the green dash line is about three thousand eight hundred uh fifty square feet. So to put on, to help better understand how the pedestrian work pattern works. Um, here is a bird view of the building run rings. So here is a six-foot free and a clear sidewalk and is our, and it is our proposed primary sidewalk work. So there is a curb, um, curb here. So people will work from here uh to have the opportunities entered to the public space area from here, um, here and here. And here is our second floor, um, flop them, the per HPC requirements. The left side of the second floor was pushed by twenty-three feet to allow the building read as one story. So a roof deck was created here. We also add a balcony in the rear to have more outdoor space for office tenants. So the total office square footage is about eighteen thousand seven hundred square feet. And here is a, oh, here is a roof law, uh, floor plan. The roof deck was removed and the right now the roof is only uh accessible for maintenance. And here are the two spaces for green roof uh areas and the rest of the areas are reserved for mechanical system. Um, for the building facade, the elevation has been adjusted to simplify the volume expression and balance the notions of the separate buildings. The new elevations include a, a volume like next to the uh closely matching the proportion of the co-op building, matching its height. Uh, the building height again has been reduced by two feet. The storefront has been adjusted to reflect a more compatible design to Tacoma Park's catalog of ground floor retail. The parapet and canopy has been uh lowered to reflective the other um local canopy expressions. And in the rear facade, we have continued the corners of course, and I utilize the scarpers to help uh break up the rear uh elevations. So lastly, regarding where we are going. So we hope to uh get approval of the combined site plan uh by the city council and Montgomery County planning board in, in May this year. And with all of this approval, we anticipate, we anticipate to uh receive this site plan certified uh on September this year and get the approval of the historic area work permit on October. And then um by June next year, we anticipate to receive the building permit. And then in the following months, we start construction. Uh, with a sixteen months um construction period, we anticipate to uh finish construction on October twenty twenty-three. And, and then let the tenant move in in January twenty twenty-four. All right, um, thank you for your, uh, for being here today. And I really appreciate um that you took your time to be here and listen to our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jing Jing. I think next up is Elsa Heisler McCoy from Montgomery County.
Thanks, Roz. And thank. I'm sorry, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So um, thanks, uh, thanks Roz and, and thanks to uh Mayor Stewart and the, the city council for inviting me here tonight to talk about um the development review process. Um, I, I will do my best to, to keep it simple um and, and brief. There are a lot of moving parts. Uh, but the, the process is uh sort of a consultative and iterative process. So uh developers come to the planning department, present their designs, um, get feedback in the initial stages and then um modify the project and, and sort of repeat until uh everything is, is sort of just right. Um, the applications are reviewed by a number of uh agencies against their own standards. Uh, so for transportation, you have the county department of transportation, the Department of Permitting Services uh right of way uh group does uh their separate review. And for projects that front on state roads, the state highway administration um does their review. The Department of Permitting Services um for projects outside of Tacoma Park um reviews stormwater. Uh, everywhere they review uh fire and uh and rescue access. They review um zoning. Uh, and then for housing projects, um, the Department of Housing and Community Affairs um will do their review. Um, for projects that are in municipalities like the city of Tacoma Park, um, the city staff also uh plays a role for projects in historic districts. The uh historic preservation commission um will conduct a review. And then, of course, uh, the development review process is all uh open and um and public. And so we work with um residents, interested parties in, in every community for every development application um that, that we receive. Developers are required to provide notice that an application has been submitted. All the application materials are on our development review website. And we welcome, um, we welcome interested folks to reach out to us uh early and often um to, to share their thoughts and concerns or support of um the project. Uh, at, at the planning department, um, we have uh three particular sort of um standards that, that we review applications against. There are the subdivision regulations uh in chapter fifty. Uh, the county forest conservation law and chapter twenty-two A, and then the zoning code um in chapter fifty-nine. Um, the, the review process ends, uh, our development review process ends at the planning board. Um, and then um moves to the Department of Permitting Services um and um the historic preservation commission or the, the city for, for the building permit end of things. The rules for subdivision, chapter fifty, um establish uh process for the review of uh subdivision applications, different types of review, um establish standards and set findings that the planning board must make in order to approve a development. Um, and what I'm going to do for, for each of these three is just very briefly give you an idea of the kinds of things that, that we're looking at. So uh for subdivision, uh, there's a finding that the, that the lot design, that the size, width, shape and orientation are appropriate to the use that, that is being proposed. Um, that the application um conforms to the recommendation of the relevant master sector plan, that public facilities um are adequate to serve the site. This is typically an, an analysis of traffic and schools. Um, and that forest conservation uh requirements and stormwater requirements are being met. Chapter twenty-two A, the forest conservation law um uh sets um uh limits on, and, and provides direction on uh tree clearing and mitigation um requirements uh for impacts to forest on site. And then there are also special requirements um for certain high priority, uh trees that are a high priority um for protection. Uh, there's a separate uh variance um that the planning board has to grant. This is typically done um in conjunction with the, the, the preliminary plan review. And then uh the, the zoning code of chapter fifty-nine establishes process. Uh, it establishes for each of the zones in the county, the development standards, the building height, the lot coverage, the setbacks, the density, um, all of those details. It goes through and establishes uh what uses are allowed in what zones and under what conditions. And then it also requires that the planning board makes certain findings in order to approve applications. So the planning board has to find that the application meets um the relevant development standards, um that the stormwater and forest conservation requirements have been met, that the design is uh overall um safe and well-integrated, um, which is sort of a, a, a catch-all for, for, um, for good design. Um, it used to be adequate, safe and efficient, and it became safe and well-integrated. Um, the board needs to find that uh the proposed development is consistent with the recommendations of the master plan and then generally compatible with um the surrounding development. Um, so uh we've spent, so the process for the Tacoma Junction review is uh has been longer than a typical review. A typical review um for preliminary plan or a site plan is about a hundred and twenty days. Um, and we've obviously gone over that on, uh, on this one. Um, but uh we've been working with uh the applicant and Roz and her staff and um all of the reviewing agencies to get all the issues that, that Adrian and Jing Jing mentioned addressed and um where we are, where we are right now. So there's still uh, we're still waiting on the state hobby administration to complete their, uh, to complete their review. But with that caveat, I think from staff's perspective, the applications meet all of the development standards um in the zoning code. Uh, it meets the requirements of the subdivision uh rules. Um, public facilities are adequate to serve um the proposed development. You know, in, in, in going back through, you know, the, the master plan, the two thousand master plan identified the Tacoma Junction site as a priority development site twenty years ago. Um, and, you know, it, it is, it is in some ways a large site, but in, it's also a, a quite small site. And there's only sort of so much that it can do. Um, and um we think that the design um that NDC has developed with all of the, the, the folks on contributing and providing guidance meets the low-scale, small-town uh feel um of the recommendation of the sector plan and that the enhancements to um the pedestrian experience and uh the, the uh bicycle access and transit access to the site will all, um, will all contribute to um the, the project um being successful. Um, so that is, uh, that's the, uh, summary of the process that we undertake for every project. Um, we have heard from a number of, of residents um over the last uh year or two. And um, you know, as, as Mayor Stewart mentioned, I think we are looking to take this to the board um towards the end of May. Um, there's a, there's a review process and all of the reports are posted online um at least ten days before the planning board hearing. So um we are looking forward to um getting state highways comments and completing um our review for that late May timeframe.
Great. Elsa, thank you so much for that. Um, that very multi-layered description of Montgomery's planning process, which is um not self-evident to um, to laypeople or other professionals. I'm Rosalind Grigsby. I'm community development manager for the city of Tacoma Park. I'm batting cleanup tonight. So a number of things that I would have gone into more detail, I think my colleagues have already covered. Uh, following Elsa is nice because he clearly identifies Montgomery County development review process. And I get a chance to talk about the city staff's role. So staff plays a role in the county process. But in this particular project, because it's city-owned especially, city council has identified a number of elements that are um either outside the county development review process, but city council um identified as important or asking for more than the county process does. And so I wanted a chance to walk through the, what city council has flagged and um, and how we're looking at that. And I'm going to share my screen here. So I'm, we staff developed two documents. Um, the first is the one you see in front of you, I hope. The Tacoma Junction requirements outside of the county development review, review process. We use two documents to guide our work. One is the resolution twenty eighteen forty-one, when council approved neighborhood development company to move forward through the county development review process. And the other is the development agreement signed between the city and neighborhood development company in twenty sixteen. So staff, um, a combined uh group of staff members from several different departments. I think there were twelve of us altogether, weighed in with our own areas of expertise on these two documents. This is the first specific to council. These are topics named in the resolution, not part of the development review proposal. They're not part of the city's or county's review of NDC's project now for various reasons. Some, some are issues that come later in the process. Um, some are issues where council really flagged for themselves and city staff elements that they need to look at. So I'm just going to quickly run through this. This is in the council agenda packet for tonight's meeting. So you can look at this um on your own again. The first is the identification of BY Morrison Park for revitalization that was in, named in the resolution. And um the work would need to be done in conjunction with S H A, and we do not yet have a timeframe for that. There are minor improvements that can happen now. There's even public art that's happened in the last uh six months there. The second is the process and role for the tree commission in the project. Um, ordinarily, the tree commission's role is related to tree protection or tree removal permits um to evaluate an appeal of those permits. Because this is city property, there isn't an appeal process. The city did require NDC to make a presentation to the tree commission. And the tree commission sent comments to the city manager to inform the, the project itself. The question of ownership of multiple lots with the addition of Tacoma Auto Clinic's property into the into the project and the city owns the parking lot and into the project, and the city owns the parking lot and the green space behind. There's a recognition that in order to move forward and for Montgomery County to grant building permits, it needs to be replatted, and we need to determine ownership of that whole. And the city is currently working with the city attorney on the best options to make this happen. This step in the redevelopment process comes later. The property is platted shortly before permits. I think on Jing Jing's chart, it was something like March twenty twenty-two. Construction impacts. The council flagged this with concern about the impact on the area businesses and residents, that they're very aware of the continuity of operations. This level of construction detail comes later in the process, not at development review, but really with permitting and staging. The city will develop a written agreement with Neighborhood Development Company to lay out the details at the appropriate time. The city council flagged the Affordable Housing Fund to take funds from this project and expand the housing fund. And the council passed ordinance twenty eighteen forty-seven dedicating revenues from the Tacoma Junction ground lease, which the city has with Neighborhood Development Company, to have funds go into the city's Affordable Housing Reserve. And that was adopted in December twenty eighteen. And the last one is traffic and safety issues. And that really addresses questions and various ideas over the years of reconfiguring the intersection. And we, the city continues to advocate with SHA on measures to improve the intersection. That, of course, is beyond the scope of this project. The second document that the city staff put together for, to to assist councils deliberative process is a spreadsheet. This is also in the agenda packet for tonight's meeting, and it's posted on the city website. And we set up, very specifically, we took provisions named in the Resolution twenty eighteen forty-one and in the Development Agreement, specific things council flagged that they wanted to look at. The way the spreadsheet is laid out, I will just go through it quickly. We have a column of the topic, the source, either the Development Agreement or the Resolution, the language that was used in that source document, how NDC responded to it, a column of submission documents where they're available. These are documents that take a viewer to the county development review document page. We wanted very much to avoid the confusion of who had the latest documents and where to find them. So we're all relying on the county development review document page to look at where we are. So we hoped that this spreadsheet would direct people a little, in a little more direct way to find what they're looking for. And then the final column is a city staff's sense of how this all fits together. Generally, council's comments fall in three categories. The first is straightforward actions that council asked NDC to do, and they're done. So the first one on the list, these are just alphabetical. The document is a Google Sheet on the website, so you can sort and search as you choose to. But the dumpster corral, the council asked for specific amenities as part of that. NDC put them in. We've got the document that takes you to see that. It's done. The second category of provisions that council looked at must be reviewed in the context of the whole project and the trade-offs required. Some provisions may even be in conflict with other things that council requested. So for instance, council asked the forest conservation easement in the green space. And they asked that NDC look at the possibility of putting in paths or benches. And because it's a category-one forest conservation easement, that's not allowed by the county provisions. So county, the council asked NDC to explore it, and the answer came back with, you can't have that, those amenities. You can't have any built or installed things in a category-one conservation easement. I'll walk you through the second one, the east elevator, because I know this came up as a question. And because I have open, can you see the architectural drawings here on the screen? The link takes you to the document itself. And you can see that on the left side is the elevator as it was planned in twenty eighteen, when NDC submitted this to the city council. And on the right side, which I can't see because it's blocked by by participants in this meeting, on the, this is on the east side of the project. There is a second elevator installed. So you can see on the plans that NDC met that request from council. So I'm going to just, oh, and the third, sorry, the third category of things that council requested were provisions that require council's determination of sufficiency. So an example is that council asked for stormwater management that significantly exceeds the requirements. And that's a determination council needs to make if they think that what NDC has put together and has in front of them meets what they had in mind. So just to quickly go through this chart, you can see we have, I think, twenty or twenty-two items called out either in the resolution of the Development Agreement, dumpster, elevator, energy-neutral building, forest conservation, I mentioned a little bit already, green construction methods. The height, as Jing Jing said, the height has been reduced by two feet. Council also asked that the parapet be reduced, and it has been reduced. And the roof no longer has, it's now only for maintenance-type things that doesn't have people on it for other activities. Sometimes on this list, things are duplicated because council may have mentioned it more than once in more than one document or more than one place in a document. So we wanted to grab the specific language council used, so you can see it, and then how it's been addressed. So there does seem to be some redundancy in this. Improved mobility and enhanced streetscape leasing. It's important to call out that the leasing happens at a later stage in the process until they have approval for a building. It's not reasonable to have tenants signing up, so that comes at a later time. The lead resolutions ask for gold or higher. Lead gold is now standard in Montgomery County. NDC, it's important to note, has enlisted a third-party consultant to work through the lead requirements and scorecards, so they're paying attention to that. And the specifics, the lead specifics about the build-out will be finalized when the tenants are identified and the plans for each commercial space are finalized. So again, some of this happens at a later date. The parking question is important. What council requested was that it be available to other businesses in the, in the area, not only to tenants of the project. And the project includes public parking. And we know that customers in this current, in this commercial district currently use multimodal transportation options. So NDC is asking for a waiver on the parking of a small, small portion of the spots. We know also that this area has the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Commercial Revitalization Overlay Zone, which allows for the parking waiver in order to encourage more pedestrian and alternative transportation options in a neighborhood development. So this is intended to be a neighborhood-scale development. And finding the sweet spot of the right amount of parking is part of that. And again, this is one of those items that's, that council will need to determine sufficiency on this. The public space Jing Jing's talked about, council requested at least twenty-seven hundred square feet, and they requested that it, that it work as public space. And as Jing Jing mentioned, they're, they're, they've designed to be thirty-eight hundred square feet. And again, the links are here. You can check yourself and see. It's important to note that NDC did work with the Tacoma Junction Community Consultation Process Advisory Committee. It's kind of a mouthful that we never managed to get a shortened form for the name. That was a council-appointed committee intended to help NDC get community input on key design elements. And they did that and folded the findings of that into their, their work that you see before you now. And then just a couple more. We've got questions of the rear facade. Council specifically asked for window openings and more light. And they also specifically asked for buffers for the neighbors that in behind the building. They asked for more detail in the design. So that's a sufficiency question. Council will need to look at that and see if that makes sense to them. The service corridor, they asked for a ten-feet width. They got it. It's in the plans. You can see it. The stormwater, as I mentioned, actually comes at a later date. NDC must submit the site plan and final plan. When the final decisions are made, they come back to the city. And the city requires, will require a system analysis of the capacity of the existing downstream stormwater infrastructure to determine the impact of receiving the stormwater generated by the project. It's important to remember that as a impermeable asphalt parking lot, that all that water now is dumping into the city's stormwater system. And finally, the last item on the list is the questions about cooperation between the co-op and Neighborhood Development Company. And council was concerned about parking and loading for the co-op. NDC does have a hundred and forty-foot lay-by for deliveries. And the co-op and NDC signed an agreement in twenty eighteen addressing their parking needs. So that's kind of an abbreviated form. As I said, the documents are available online. I, let me stop sharing. And the next part of the meeting is that we will move into breakout rooms. We have three topics identified, parking, public space, and sustainability. We have two sessions, so you can choose to go to any two of the three. They will be twenty minutes each. And participants will choose your breakout sessions. So the city staff is going to work their Zoom magic to make that available. And you can pick, and you will be, you will find yourself transported into the breakout room. It's important to note that we have city staff, county staff, and NDC consultants in these breakout rooms to answer questions. And so we want to take as much advantage as we can of their expertise to get clarity for residents and council members in this process. So with that, Jessie, do I turn it over to you to lead us into the breakout rooms?
Yes, I thought the city manager was going to speak, but if not, I can open the breakup rooms? Breakup rooms? Breakout?
No one's breaking up tonight.
Breakout rooms? Oh, open the rooms now, and you can, everyone can select their rooms.